Welcome. Hello, hello, welcome to our second Dr. Howard Fuller Town Hall. Hi, Ms. Smith, how you doing? I'm glad to see everyone's here. We've got a lot of really important updates for you. Mr. Atwell, can you project the agenda for us? This is what we're going to cover tonight. We're going to cover an update on the recovery process where we are in the emergency closure for COVID. We're going to do a brief update for the class of 2020, our graduates, about graduation and other important announcements. We're going to recap some important notes we shared with students in the past week about academics and how to finish the semester strong. We will be having summer school. I know we had said we wouldn't, but we find it necessary to do so. We're going to talk a little bit about that. And then we're going to talk about what reopening the school post-COVID will look like and ask for your help and your input. So if we're ready to get started, we will. You'll notice that there's a chat feature up at the top right of your screen. You have access or watching from a computer. It's very easy to just click on there, enter the chat question that you have. Mr. Smith will read off those questions when we get to the Q and A, and we will answer those questions as they come. If you are using a cellphone and the chat feature is not as easy to get to for you, after we've read the final questions, you can unmute your microphone and ask your question live and in person. All right, so let's get started. Let's start with the recovery update. So the most important thing to know is that by far, the majority of our students are engaging and learning every single day, and they're doing that with Chromebooks that we deployed immediately after the closures were announced. And our teachers who have been absolutely amazing during this time period, they've been working so hard. They've got regular office hours, but what we probably don't know and need to recognize is that there's so many of our students who are working or have other things going on that they need support late at night or on weekends, and teachers are meeting those needs. And it's just so wonderful to see the community coming together to support one another. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. Yeah! And as we have the best teachers ever, I wanted to shout out all of them for their hard work. Yeah! All right. So, Alasia, no shade. It's just been a long day, man. No shade. So also with the COVID response, we have started to work together and with other schools and school districts to figure out what the best options are for us moving forward. And one of the things that we realized, like we took a look at our mission. Our mission is always very close to our heart, and that's to prepare our students to go to and through college. And even though some schools are choosing to do a pass/fail option because they feel like that's the best option, we disagree. We felt like our curriculum is something that we can move into the virtual world very easily, which is what we did. We were able to make sure that all students had a device, which is what we did. And we were able to make sure that every student who needed access, like Wi-Fi, like they were connected. So for that reason, and because like our kids' lives matter to us, and we want to make sure that they are able to get into college and that they're able to be employable in the years ahead, we made the decision not to do pass/fail, but to continue to teach and to assess and to celebrate and to promote and graduate, and that's what we're going to do. So there will be no pass/fail grades. Students may not fail, but they will get it incomplete, and they will need to make up any work or repeat that class in order to get credit at a later date. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And if you are asking what we're going to do, like, well, what about academics? I'm having a hard time understanding, like, how to get on, how to find the assignments. Mr. Smith is here, and he's going to give you the rundown on FunTown. Go for it, Mr. Smith.
Hey, good afternoon slash evening, everybody, and thank you, Alasia, for calling out. Whether I look tired, I will share my Google Calendar with you personally, so you can see all the meetings I was in today. So I just want to start by acknowledging all the hard work of our teachers and the students and families. It means a lot to have so many of you on the call today. Our teachers are posting a weekly assignment list for each grade level that has one assignment per class that students are responsible for completing. You can find that on our school's website, oweschoolca.org. If you click into the Distance Learning tabs, you'll see 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Furthermore, each Pride Leader has been posting that assignment list in their Pride's Google Classroom each week, so that there's lots of different touchpoints for students. If after this meeting you still have questions about where to find the weekly assignments, please just make a note of that in the chat box, and I'll make sure I reach out to you personally.
All right, Mr. Atwell, I think we can move on to the next. And then, Class of 2020 update. We met with the students today, and we're really excited to announce that the Board of Directors for Dr. Howard Fuller Collegiate Academy generously agreed to pay the senior fees for every single senior, so all of the fees for seniors are being waived. Now, if there are fees that were due prior to this year, those still have to be paid because a promise is a promise. But your senior fees for this year are being waived, and so Mr. Beard is on the call. He can let you know how those refunds are going to be issued. Mr. Beard?
Yes, I am here. So as I discussed earlier this morning, the senior fees will be refunded starting next week. And the way that will happen is that if you pay your fees directly and you are 18 years of age or older, you will get a check cut directly to you, and it will be sent to the address that is in Power School. If you did not pay your fees directly or was paid by a parent or guardian, the parent that is, the primary parent that is listed in Power School will have the check made out to them, and it will still be sent to the address that's listed in Power School. So if you know that the address that you have in our current system is not up to date, you can feel free to send me an email directly, or a teacher that can forward it, or Ms. Parker or Mr. Smith an email and let them know that, or Ms. Muse, that your address needs to be updated. But checks will start going out next week, and that is how we plan on handling that.
So to be clear, the board decided to do this not just because the class of 2020 are amazing and wonderful, but mostly because they have amazing and wonderful parents that they felt deserved a break. Everyone is struggling right now, and they wanted to make sure to try to take some stress off of 2020 parents. That's kind of love you get in these parts. So shout out to the board for that. Shout out to parents for inspiring the board to do that kind of gift-giving. It's awesome. Just so you know, those of you who aren't seniors, that's $350 per student. We have over 50 students, which equates to about $15,000. So thank you so much for that very generous support of our parents and students, Class of 2020. All right. The other thing, and really important, if you are a parent of Class of 2020, is that the last assignment is due May 26. That doesn't mean you wait. We don't want kids to wait until the 26th and turn it in for the very first time. That's the last draft is going to be accepted. So if they wait until the 26th, turn it in, and it's not good enough, we're going to have some problems getting to graduation. So make sure that they're planning ahead of time and submitting those assignments with at least three or four days in advance, so that they can give teachers time to give them feedback. They need at least three or four workdays to give feedback. So make sure they plan accordingly. Now, if you are looking at your calendar right now, you will notice that that's two more weeks before the Class of 2020 is done with high school. So make sure that they are using their time wisely. Fortunately, it's going to rain most of the rest of the week, so they'll have nothing to do but stay in the house. But the sun will be shining. Tell them, don't pay any attention to that sunshine. Stay in the house, get it done. They can enjoy the sunshine as full-blown adults with high school diplomas in hand on the way to college. All right, Ms. Muse, am I forgetting anything with the Class of 2020?
No, I think that you covered the key points.
Okay, sounds good. As soon as students are done with their assignments and they get the stamp that they're done, they can make an appointment to come and get their caps and gowns. Yay! And when those are passed out, we're going to ask you to make sure that they don't go nuts in wearing them, thinking that there's not going to be a ceremony, because there is going to be a ceremony. And our very next meeting with the Class of 2020 is going to talk about the options on the table for that. So that's all we have to report, Class of 2020. Next page, please. We've already talked about academics. Was there anything else we needed to talk about? Or should we pause and answer any questions? Are there any questions?
Did you share the due date for work for academics? I know you shared it for 12th grade, but for the 11th?
Yeah, so the end of the semester for everyone is June 11. So 9th, 10th, and 11th grade should be shooting to finish all of their work the week of Memorial Day. So try to get that week of Memorial Day shoot to get all of your work done that week, so you have time to polish up some things that you haven't finished up. Try to finish as early as possible. Once you are done, you will be able to make an appointment, turn in your Chromebooks, clean out your locker, because some of you still have lots of stuff in your locker. All right, next subject. Finishing the semester strong. We're getting in the habit of just completing things. We want kids to really try hard. So there are certain things that we're expecting. We're expecting them to do all of their reading assignments and their math assignments. We're expecting them to do their own work. We're finding that some students are panicking or getting lazy and starting to overshare their work or overcopy people's work, and that's called cheating. We don't want to do that. We see it, and then students will have to do it over. It just slows down the whole process. So make sure that they're doing their own work, make sure that they're organizing their time so that they get it in early. If they don't understand, there are office hours. Teachers were only, and this is another reason why our teachers are amazing, teachers were only asked to schedule office hours twice a week. Many of them have scheduled it for three or four days per week. So please find out when those office hours are. If you look on the assignment sheet, there's a link that you can click onto and see what the scheduled office hours are. You can email teachers if you have any concerns about your students. They've been in contact with you. Let me know if you haven't heard from anyone. That means we don't have your contact information, and we need it. So there will be a survey at the end of this. Make sure you fill that out, so we know how to get in touch with you if no one has been in touch with you yet. All right, next up. Summer school. Raise your hand if you want to go to summer school. We were not planning on having summer school because we wanted to prepare to move into the new building, but COVID has changed all of that. So we are going to actually have summer school to support some students who need a little extra time. This is for the students who are earning incompletes. Unfortunately, we're only going to be able to offer summer school in English and math. Maybe science, we're not sure yet. So students that need summer school, there will be a signup that will be on the website, registration link for you to register. Only students who are registered by their parents will be able to attend. The other thing is, if students have a lot to make up or were already behind, the school year will offer opportunities for additional credit recovery. So we, like, we love you, we got you, but we've got to meet it both ways. There's still time in this year to finish strong, so let's finish strong. Mr. Smith, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, Alasia had a great question, and I really appreciate her honesty. She said she's still confused about the Newsy LA articles and Summit. So, Alasia, to be really clear, the Newsy LA articles are how you earn credit for your remaining power focus areas. So for each of your classes, you have remaining power focus areas, you'll need to read and complete four articles and get a 75% or higher on the four-question multiple-choice reading quiz that comes at the end of each one, okay? And in terms of Summit, I'm going to think really quickly. The classes that you had on Summit, so thinking about English, Modern World One, and Biology, they are continuing on Summit. Math, freshman writing seminar, and physical education are continuing on Google Classroom. So I get that it can be a little different, but what I will say is that if you click into the 9th grade assignment list, you'll see the teachers have it really clearly laid out, which class and where you can find the work for it. I'll make sure that your Pride Leader follows up with you after this meeting to make sure you're not confused any further. Also, if you want to shoot me an email, I'd be happy to answer that as well.
So, Alasia, can you unmute your microphone? And do you feel comfortable telling us why the articles are throwing you off, so we can get a little more information? Because I think there might be others who are feeling the same way.
Okay, so it's like, I don't know, because it'd be like we'd be having not a lot to do, but then I'd be forgetting to do the articles, and then I'd be having to read some more. Like, in English, we'll have like a whole article to read, and then we've got another article to read for her because of Summit. It's just a lot.
It is. Do you know why we chose to do the articles instead of the focus areas?
No.
Okay, so the focus areas, as you know, you have to take a test, and you have to be with the teacher to take that test, right?
Yeah.
And so, hold on, Ms. Ameruso, I'm going to actually have you address Alasia in a second. And so, since we can't have those tests because we're not in person, we wanted you to be able to at least get some educational value out of learning. So that's why we assigned you the articles instead. It was our trade-off, okay?
Okay.
Want to take the place of those things, but that's why. It's not a forever thing. You know, it wasn't a perfect system, but I would say this is the one hiccup in all of the things that we have hicking up. Ms. Ameruso, can you provide some clarity? You there, Ms. Ameruso? Okay.
All right, while we wait for Ms. Ameruso's response, Keonte, I can answer your question. So if there are focus areas that you've already done, you can still read the articles, and you'll get credit for a different focus area. So I assume you're talking about maybe a social studies class in Modern World One. Social studies classes were in a unique position, that they could pick articles for certain focus areas. Not all classes could do that. But if you read the articles, get the quiz scores that you need, you will still get credit for them, okay?
Will we flunk if we don't do it?
Well...
That's a great question. You're not going to flunk, but you're not going to pass. You will get an incomplete, and you'll have to retake the course, which means you'll either have to still do the articles, or you'll have to do the focus areas.
So guys, sorry for the delay. On Newsy LA, you're assigned two text sets with at least 10 articles each in them. So you have the ones from being literate in the digital age, and then you have the ones from cultivating close reading. So those are the ones that are assigned, and the ones that you should be continually doing, and I'm checking those and updating as you go. Does that make sense, Alasia?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that today.
Thank you, Alasia, for asking that question. I'm sure other people had it. I appreciate your bravery in getting that done, so I'm going to shout you out right now for showing a lot of optimism, curiosity, and love, because it takes all of those things to ask questions about money.
Thank you.
And Alasia and others who had questions about this, what your teachers are doing, they're just emailing me, once you've earned enough or completed enough Newsy LA quizzes to get an exemption, and then I go and do it, and so it'll show up on your Summit platform with a green check, like you had passed it like normal.
Oh, so is that the email, like, Mr. Fritz was sending out? It was like about the, it was something he had sent us an email about, the things that we had to do on Summit.
So the Summit thing's a little bit different, right? But that's how we are replacing the power focus area part of Summit. Remember, your focus areas are only worth 20% of your overall grade, and the projects make up 80% of it. And Jani, your question, if we read one article, does that count as one focus area? No, you need to have four articles done for one focus area with a score of 75%.
Tatiana, I don't understand your question. Tatiana, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
I think she's talking about the deadlines, because Mr. Butler asked us to repeat it too, but for the last day to, like, submit work for each grade level.
So you got to read four articles to pass one focus area.
Correct.
Oh, my God.
You can do it. You can do it. You've been reading since K5. You can do it. Is there an official day everything needs to be in, or just by the end of the semester?
Yeah, just by the end.
Oh, God, they hard. Them things be hard. I don't even get some pop, to be honest.
I like... You should definitely...
Okay.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
So the last date for 9th, 10th, and 11th graders to submit work is June 11. But what I do want to say is, all of your teachers will stop assigning new work well before that date actually happens. So again, your Pride Leaders posted a calendar for each grade level that shows the week that the last new assignment will be posted for that class. So for example, in Mr. Fritz's Modern World One class, the last new assignment will be posted this coming week. So if you've been staying on top of your work in his class and his project, you could conceivably be done with his class by next week.
All right. And thank you, Mr. Butler, for offering to help Alasia organize her life. What if you're done before June 11? Well, one, you're going to get shouted out either in quarter cap or half cap, but then you're done, and you are on your way to the next grade with nothing to worry about. If you want to continue learning over the summer, we can talk about Chromebook loan program that we're thinking of, but only if you finish your work. So we'll talk more about that in the next one. But right now, again, you can finish early, shoot for Memorial Day week. Say that, tell yourself, that's the week I'm going to shoot to be done. And even if you miss that a little bit, you'll still be ahead of June 11.
Got to use scissors.
You will get a certificate for quarter cap. It will be mailed to your home, or we will give it to you when you come to clean out your locker. Absolutely.
So for both quarter and half cap, the dates are a little bit different. So for 9th graders... Tati, can you mute your mic, hon?
Okay.
Thank you. So for 9th graders, the date to have all your assignments done, but for quarter cap, is on May 29. For 10th graders, the date is May 22. Okay, so it's a little bit earlier, but that's the kind of cutoff for being eligible for the quarter and half cap awards.
So juniors don't get a quarter cap or half cap award. They get to be seniors. And so that's where their celebration is, but their deadline is the same, June 11. All right, any other questions? All right, so there will be a signup link for summer school on the website. Look for it soon. I'm not putting it on there now, because I'm not allowing anybody to sign up for summer school without trying to finish the semester. Like, no. And you know how we do. We usually finish early. So those of you who like to get it done, get it done. All right? Sounds good. Next, Mr. Atwell. Reopening the school post-COVID-19. So I don't know if you all are aware, because, you know, Facebook being, Facebook news being what it is, you may not have seen all of the toll this virus is taking. Today, they reported that 75,000 Americans have died from this virus. It's a very serious thing, and we have to take safety very seriously. So that means school's going to need to look a little different when we come back, because they don't expect the virus to be completely gone. We would like your input on virtual learning, what's working for you, what's not. We are absolutely coming back, Charles. We are absolutely coming back. But what I need your help with, all of your help, is I want you to help us plan what next school year is going to look like post-COVID. So like, we're going to have to practice social distancing. What does that look like in the union? We're going to have to make sure there are hand washing stations throughout the school, where the best places to put those. How are we going to manage, you know, what the classroom setup looks like? So those things. And some of us are frankly struggling with virtual learning. We need your feedback on what's working and what's not working, so we can make those adjustments. Anything is possible. So someone asked, is it possible to do half and half face-to-face and virtual learning? Anything is possible. It's the great thing about being the school that we are. We're not accountable to anyone except for the government. And so we get to design the school that meets our needs. So I really need as many people signing up, and there's a link that Mr. Atwell is going to drop for us. There's a link. I need as many people to sign up for that as possible. Also in that link is, I need you to let me know if you plan on re-enrolling. We've got to make sure that we have enough of, we buy enough supplies, gloves, masks, hand washing stations, desks, all of those things, we need to make sure we have enough of. So I need an accurate count of who's coming back. Denzel, was that you saying you're coming back next year? What?
No, he wanted to know if there was any other information for seniors. He got big, important things to do, apparently.
No, we're done with the senior folk.
Okay.
Peace. All right, so we do plan to reopen the school. The start date, we said we wanted to start right after Labor Day. We may actually move that up just a little bit, because they're expecting another wave of the virus in the fall, and we want to get as much school in as possible in case we have to to go back home and work remotely again. We don't know, but we're planning, we're expecting the worst, hoping for the best, planning for both situations. Charles, did you hear me? Charles? Charles, are we coming back to school next year? This is your question. I'll mute and answer.
Nah, nah. I'll go back.
We're coming back, and what do we need to come back?
I don't, school spirit, I guess. Right?
We absolutely need some school spirit. Yes, we need it for Class of 2021. Y'all going to bring it?
I am. I don't know about them.
Oh, my goodness. All right, I'm glad you're coming back. Make-up ACT, I'm glad you brought that up. We are waiting to hear from ACT when we are going to be able to take the test, but DPI has closed all schools for the remainder of the year. So that's not just us. That's everybody. That's everywhere that you would actually take a test. And since it's closed, they can't offer any activities, which is why they have not rescheduled the ACT yet. If that changes... If that changes, we will let you know. Thank you, Ms. Carson. All right, any questions from anyone? Mr. Butler, everybody wants you to call them. Anybody have questions?
I just want to address Ms. Carr. Ms. Carr, hi, thanks for your question about your daughter's specific class needs. I dropped my email inside of the chat. If you could, is it reasonable to ask you to just send me an email with your daughter's name and teacher? Otherwise, I'd be happy to jump on a phone call with you after this is over.
All right, well, I think if we don't have any questions, I'm gonna ask again, Ms. Britt, Ms. Smith, would love you all, Good Woman's Voice, Ms. Goodman, I would love you all on a committee that helps us figure out what next year looks like. Would also love students involved in this process, because y'all gotta live in it, in the world we create, so it should be the world that you want to create. So I see Nazaria Barrell being a part of that, I see Charles being part of that. See lots of people being a char, being a part of it. So if you are interested, please make sure you click on the link, fill in the information about whether or not you're returning next year, and then let me know if you plan on participating in that committee. Everyone is so very needed in making sure that we stay in this together, and that we create a school that we're gonna love to come to or work from home from. All right? I don't have any other questions, so.
There's, there's a cou, there's a couple more questions.
Okay, awesome, let's hear them.
Charles wants to know, what about sports for next year?
We will have that information probably at our next town hall. The Wisconsin Area Athletic Association is trying to figure all of that out. From what I understand, they, they're expecting to have sports. What it's gonna look like is, is yet to be determined, but once they figure that out, we're going to share that with you at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Goodman, or Ms. Goodman, excuse me, wanted to know, will everyone be able to attend the senior graduation? She thinks it would be nice for underclassmen to see.
I would love that, but I'm, I, I would almost take a guess that the requirements are going to be restricted to restricted to the, the bare minimum. We've got to talk with seniors and their parents about what scenarios of graduation work for them. If we can invite others, we will.
Thanks. And then a couple of students wanted to know about the new building.
Yes, we are still working on that, but COVID has slowed us all down. So we won't be able to move into the building in September, but we are hopeful that we'll be able to move into it relatively soon. We want to make sure that it's the right building and that it's safe to move into, given everything that's going on.
Great, thanks for those answers. I don't think we have any more questions. Let me just double-check.
Well, Elijah said, since six feet, when we go back, our class is gonna be smaller. They could be smaller, which is why we need to know who's planning on enrolling. If we need to change the configuration of classrooms, we need to know that ahead of time. Otherwise, we will have to cap enrollment. Yay, Elijah's coming back, whoop, whoop. Mr. Atwell, where will the link be for re-enrollment of next year?
So I would look for it this week. It will be on the website. It'll also be in remind and email, so we'll blast that out pretty far and wide with all the different places. It'll be on social media. Make sure you're following our social media. Please make sure that you're checking your reminds. That means if you don't have the app, check your emails at least two or three times a day. There is important information that's coming through, and I know that there may be some students who aren't checking their email, and they're missing stuff. So that's really an important way that we're communicating right now. So remind, social media, and email.
So I wanna, I just got a text message from someone that students are saying, it's on the news, that we gotta repeat the same grade. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, I want to make sure we're really clear. You will pass if you do your work. You will receive an incomplete if you don't. If you do not complete, the incomplete turns into an F. But we're gonna give you plenty of time and opportunity to make up that class. If it, if, if you get an incomplete, but we're not gonna speak that into existence. What we're gonna speak into existence is hard work, being organized, asking questions, and attending office hours. That's what we're gonna do. If you find that you have an incomplete, you will be able to, you might be able to attend summer school depending on the subject. All right, so make sure you're getting your work done. Okay? Sounds good. All right, thank you, everyone. And last day for sophomores, last day for everyone is June 11th. June 11th, get it in. Don't wait till June 11th. I shoot for May, uh, May 26th, like everybody else. Whoop, whoop. Have a great night. Love you all. Stay safe.